I call to order the March 25th, 2025 city council meeting, our committee of the whole. Clerk Clark, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember O'Rear.
Here.
Councilmember Root.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Rocha.
Here.
Pinkerton.
Here.
Councilmember Hutchings.
Here.
Mayor Shoemaker.
Here.
Please rise as you are able and join in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which is theirs, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Each member of council has received a copy of the minutes from our February 25th, 2025 Committee of the Whole. Are there any corrections from council? I have one. If you would, um, hang on one second, let me find the specific place that it is. Under Business Item A, in the second paragraph, the vote is recorded as yes, three, no, zero. It should be yes, three, no, four. In defense of our city clerk, I believe I sent her that wrong number, so I don't know why I'm having fives and sevens and anyway, but it was yes, three, no, four, and that was the only correction I had. If there are no other corrections, then the minutes will stand approved as amended. Item five, citizen comments. We didn't have anyone sign up to make any comments this evening. Item six, staff reports. Six A, Christine Farino, our financial director, will deliver the financial report. Director Farino.
Good evening, Mayor and council. A few highlights from the February financial report. Year-to-date revenues for general fund through February were $17 million, which puts us at 69% of the budget. Year-to-date expenses are $27.5 million, which is 112% of the budget, but this also includes $11.3 million towards the municipal complex. Year-to-date revenues for the sewer fund through February were $2.4 million, which is 109% of the budget. This amount also includes reimbursement for a skip grant we received for about $966,000. The year-to-date expenses are $521,000, which is 42% of the budget. Year-to-date revenues for the special revenue fund through February are $4 million, which is 102% of the budget. This includes a $1 million grant we received towards the streetscape project. The year-to-date expenses are $2.6 million, which is 136% of the budget. This includes some expenses that were paid out through the bond towards the streetscape project and the Swamp Rabbit Trail extension. The year-to-date revenues for the Public Works Enterprise Fund through February were $1.6 million, which is 101% of the budget, and year-to-date expenses were $775,000, which is 60% of the budget. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel? Thank you, Director Farino.
Thank you.
Six B, city administrator report. Administrator Graceley.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I'm going to highlight some items that are ongoing, that are more recently ongoing. As you can see behind us, there's construction still happening for Phase Two of the park, so I don't feel like that needs a lot of discussion. If you recall, a couple of months ago, council passed a resolution requesting a crosswalk for East Curtis Street at the municipal complex specifically near the fire department apparatus base. I did discuss that project with SCDOT, and they have agreed to allow a pedestrian hybrid beacon at that intersection, which is amazing. They suggested that that be done in conjunction with an emergency signal for the fire department, so I have applied for a C-Fund grant through the county transportation committee, and Chief Nichols and I will be going on Thursday evening to present that request to the committee. We anticipate that that will be funded, but we won't know until late April. So I may not know before the next meeting, but I will certainly keep you apprised of that, and then, once funds are in place, we should have that project complete within six to nine months. FEMA reimbursement is ongoing. We have applied for reimbursement on our Category A and Category B. Category A is the debris removal that was contracted out, and then Category B is the debris removal that was from forced account labor, meaning our city staff, and that total is about $1.5 million that we will be getting back from FEMA. We do have multiple other categories that we are still in the process of providing the paperwork for, the largest of which remaining will be the infrastructure Category C, which would include the culverts that were damaged in various locations throughout the city. Just wanted to remind you that there are two terms on the election committee that council will need to fill. We have posted that on our website and on Discover Simpsonville, and have been receiving applications. We'll make those available to council between now and the business meeting, so that you will be able to vote by secret ballot for those appointments. The FY26 budget is ongoing. There's been a great deal of work done so far, but we are unable to finalize the budget to provide a draft for you until we have the exact amount of our health insurance renewal, and we are still waiting for that information. My intention is to provide you with the draft of the budget as soon as possible, and then present at the April Committee of the Whole meeting. Multiple other announcements for concerts. In fact, there was one today that didn't get listed on here, so it'll be on next month's report. Of course, updates on all the ongoing projects, and that's about it as far as what I'd like to highlight, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel? Councilmember Pinkerton.
Yes, sir, thank you. Crosswalk at East Curtis, thank you for doing all that. I know there's a lot of people in the neighborhoods that are very happy to see that happen. Can you tell me, though, what the estimated cost is going to be for this, or what we're looking for as far as funds?
So, we are, we would like to install mast arms for those, for the emergency signal, so that we don't have wooden poles where we have our nice streetlights, of course, you know, and with everything we're doing downtown coming up. So, our match for the mast arms is about $200,000. The C-Fund application will be just under $400,000 for the emergency signal and the pedestrian hybrid beacons and the road striping with a thermo. As you can see, these are very expensive. Nothing is inexpensive anymore.
I'm just wondering why, maybe that that, the crosswalk probably wasn't there, but the mast arms and the signal for the fire department wouldn't have been in the original streetscape plan?
No, we didn't have a, we didn't have an emergency signal planned with that project. We had, the plan all along, we had intended to apply for that once the buildings were established.
Okay, so if we apply for those funds, that would roll into the streetscape project then?
No, that would be maintained separately from the streetscape project. It would be a different award number than the other C-Funds that have gone into the streetscape project.
Okay, a couple more things. Budget. In the ongoing discussions about the budget, have you guys included funds for the Greenlink 601 bus in the next budget for this year?
I have kept those funds in the next budget, yes. We didn't make any expenditure this year, and we don't anticipate that we will, because there still is no intergovernmental agreement from Greenlink to the city yet.
Well, if I can't do it now, I would certainly in the future, as we could discuss this budget, move to take that money out of the budget. We have not seen any agreement. I just think that if this, the system, I don't have a problem with the bus, but our allotment that we're putting into it, we're really not gaining much out of it, I can see, and I would not approve the budget if it's included in this budget. It's just my comments for now.
Counsel?
On that one.
Oh, on that one, sorry, I thought you were yielding the floor.
One more thing. The contracts for the municipal complex with the design team and the builder, I'm assuming we're getting fairly close to closing these things out. Are, I guess in a nutshell, without a lot of information, are we whole with these contractors and the design team, over, as, under?
We are right on budget, as planned. In fact, we may see a little return. I'm not sure that'll be at closeout, but we do factor into the construction contract, contractor contingency, and then they will, they will share that savings back with the city at the conclusion of the project. Now, you know, every time we, we have to make a correction or add something, it takes away from that contingency, but I do still anticipate that there will be a credit, albeit probably a small one, coming back to the city at the end of the project.
That's better than the other way around.
Yes, much better.
Thank you, appreciate your answers.
Of course.
Counsel? Councilmember O'Rear.
Um, I guess you might have the whole, the number number. How many folks have applied for the election commission roles?
I have seen two applications so far, but those go to Justin Campbell.
Okay.
So, and I asked him about it probably a week ago, so I don't have an updated number.
Thanks.
Any further questions for Administrator Graceley? Each department has a representative here to answer questions from council on their monthly reports. Are there any questions for department heads? All right, for all of you, thank you for being here with us this evening. You are excused to leave without any offense to council. If you would like to make a hasty exit, beat it to the exits, thank you for being here. We appreciate that. Item seven is business. These are items that we anticipate putting on the agenda of our next business meeting. So we'll begin with seven A, Z-2025-01, proposed rezoning of properties at 101, 103, and 16333 East College Street. Mr. Derby, would you summarize, please? And do you need me to switch to your slides? Okay, hold on one moment. And you have the remote.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. On your screen in green is the location. This is three parcels on East College. 124 below that used to be the old SunTrust. That's City Hall, the very bottom of your screen. The current zoning for, is business general. You see all around that to the north is business general. 124, the old City Hall, is business urban. The applicant is looking to have all three of these parcels, those two white buildings, and the black SUV in the back, that's a separate building on the third parcel. They're looking to have all three of these rezoned to business urban. The back garage, if y'all are familiar with this spot about a year ago, and prior to that, this was a garage that I had to battle daily with code enforcement and zoning issues. It was a nightmare, but the new owners have taken over, they've cleaned it up the back, they rehabbed the front two buildings through some facade grants. What they're looking to do from the rezoning is do attached, single-family studio apartments in the back two units only. That is allowed in business urban. This did go to the March 4th Planning Commission meeting. It was recommended a six to zero approval. There was no public comment, so I can answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Derby. A motion is in order. Councilmember Williams.
Um, I move, I move to, I make a motion to move Z-2025-01, proposal rezoning of properties at 101, 103, and 16333 East College Street to the next business meeting.
I have a motion from Councilmember Williams with a second from Councilmember Pinkerton. Discussion?
Hutchings.
Was it Hutchings?
Hutchings.
Sometimes I can't distinguish between the two of you down there. So a motion from Williams, second from Hutchings. Councilmember O'Rear.
Actually came to the planning commission meeting when this came up, and it was really neat. I enjoyed looking at it, and I think it'd be of great benefit where it is and the design, if it's what, it's on paper now, it's really neat, and I think it'd be a great benefit to Simpsonville, so.
Mr. Derby, with the, with the dwelling units, are they going to be facing College Street?
Uh, no, sir, they'll be facing the alley.
So those facades are on the, are facing the alley, not College Street? Any further comments from council? Councilmember Root?
Just a quick, just a quick comment on the plans. It looks like there's, it's connecting to the building that sits on College. It looks like there's a connector. Can you explain what, what that is, or if that's gonna?
Correct.
Have any purpose?
The image in the bottom left, see the left gray door behind that, that little small structure, that is like a hallway that leads behind the barbershop. That's gonna be their, that's that tall skinny portion, the top, that's a communal storage area for the both of those units to share. So it kinda doesn't connect into the barbershop, but it would if they could through that wall, so it's behind the barbershop.
Are these like a, I guess I see now it's more like a studio of one bedroom? Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Rocha.
Mr. Derby, can you tell us what else could be placed there if this is rezoned to business
Pretty much anything you see commercial-wise, with exception to convenience stores, gas stations, car washes, big intensity uses, restaurants, office spaces, any kind of retail, but very limited, basically what you see on Main Street by the ice cream station, very limited, things that won't take up large spaces. Business urban does not have a parking requirement. They're allowed to build to the property lines, so that kinda gives them the ability to maximize their property. A lot of those properties over there are set back off the road, and as part of the facade, sorry. Part of the facade of downtown, you kinda want that streetscape of having the buildings all to the front. That's kinda what we wanna encourage with the business urban zoning.
In your opinion, does this fit what we have in mind for as far as implementing the rest of the downtown master plan and the streetscape?
Uh, yes, ma'am, you can read my report. We've spoken to some of the property owners next to this property in the past. We kinda entertain this to them, because it kinda helps out with their future developments and kinda future-proofing their properties. This is the only applicant that truly, our owner, really stepped forward, actually wanted to do that, so it's kinda what we want for all that side over there to kinda grow towards the street, so.
On the motion to approve Z-2025-01, proposed rezoning of properties at 101, 103, and 16333 East College, and move this item to the next business agenda, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yeah.
Yes, all opposed signify by saying no. That motion carries unanimously by a vote of seven yeses and zero nos. Item seven B, TX-2025-01, miscellaneous refinements to the zoning ordinance regarding temporary signage. Mr. Derby, can you summarize, please?
Yes, sir, thank you. Council, on your staff report, this is the sign exemption section of our zoning ordinance. For legal reasons, we are having to update our exempt signage. The current signage we have kinda lets different regulations affect these signs depending on the content. What's being proposed to you now is to kinda group those together and have the same regulations. That's for construction signs, garage signs, special event signs, directional signs, as yard signs, it's a new definition, and having post signs, which will cover real estate signs. Both those pretty much have the same guidelines for distance, how long they can be out there and the sizes, so it's more of in line with having those at the same kind of regulations. This did go through Planning Commission on May, sorry, March 4th. There was an amendment discussion by Planning Commission. One of the members proposed amendment to have the length of time that these signs can be out there down to 30, for what stated here is 45. That did not pass. They did make an amendment to, and discuss having more than one sign out there during that 45 period, for the effect that if someone was to have multiple candidates or wanted to have a garage sale the same 45 days that they're having a political sign. So that was sent back with help of our council. They've modified that one section to include multiple signs during that period. That was recommended, as is stated, to council with a five to one vote, and I can answer any questions you might have, or council, I'd elaborate a little more.
Thank you, Mr. Derby. A motion is in order. Councilmember Root.
Mr. Mayor and council, I make the motion that we accept TX-2025-01, miscellaneous, miscellaneous refinements to zoning ordinance.
Second. Have a motion from Councilmember Root with a second from Councilmember Pinkerton. Councilmember O'Rear.
Um, first I wanna thank Mr. Derby for the time he spent with me talking about this and guiding, guiding me through this, because there's a lot here and a lot in the ordinances, and I'm not an attorney.
Bring it a little closer, yeah.
All right. I just wanna thank you for all the time you spent with me going through this and everything. I don't know, and no one knows this, but I actually tried to get this done last year, and was cut off at the pass, I guess you can say in different terms, and my changes are still much more liberal than what we see from this change. And we got the changes in, I was very, very concerned about a lot of them, and some I might lean on, on Mr. Hughes next to me about, just for interpretation. When we get to, the part of the change the most are, the section R and one, you get down to all the Roman numerals. I really don't have any issue with number one or number seven, but I have an issue with the rest of them. Well, no, I don't have any issue with one, two, or seven, but the rest of them I do. And this is where I'm gonna lean on Mr. Hughes with number three, and if y'all can humor me for a second while I go down these, just to let you know my thoughts on it. Number three, shall not be located on city property, which I do agree with that part. Public right-of-way, I'm not sure how that's interpreted. Public right-of-way, is that still part of the city, or is that someone's property, personal property?
That is, that is, yep. That's defined as city of right-of-way as is defined typically in the city zoning ordinance.
So would the, the right-of-way apply to people's private property with this? In other words, could I, could I place a sign in my yard that's technically in the right-of-way?
Yeah, if, if the right-of-way extends own to private property, it's still within the, in the city right-of-way. There are times for that happens.
And my question to that would be this, the city owns almost no, no roads, very, very few, and, and I was asking today, and I don't wanna, you know, putting words in Mr. Derby's mouth, but I asked today, it seems like there's more than one entity that has their hands in the right-of-way. The road I live on's a county road, obviously I live in the city, and it's my understanding the right-of-way is for the person who owns the road. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so if, if the city doesn't have any, say, in the right-of-way of people who live off non-city streets, how can this even stand as enforcing someone to not be able to put a sign on their private property in a right-of-way, only if the county were, would enforce it, if that's in fact in the county ordinances?
It's, it's not a matter of, it's a matter of the intent is to keep signage out of a place where it could be more visible or could impede the view from the street, and so that is the, the reason why you define where it can be located on property. So it's, it's a defined area regardless if it's a city street, county street, or SCDOT street, it can't be within the right-of-way as it's currently drafted, and so we would still have a right to enforce that if you adopted this particular zoning ordinance.
Okay.
Even if it's a county right-of-way.
Second question, pertaining to number three, because, and I brought my own plat for my house, my property line is the right-of-way. Of course, I talked to Mr. Derby today, my, my property line is 10 feet inside what is Jonesville Road, so that is my property line. What is read in here is that the setback for the signs would be from the property line, which is the right-of-way. So I'm already 10 feet into my yard, and if you look at section, uh, 410, 5, standards for all signs, minimum setback, unless otherwise specified, all signs shall be set back a minimum distance of five feet from each property line. My property line is 10 feet from the road. Can this also be enforced against that? In other words, instead of 10 feet now out of the right-of-way, this is pushing me even five feet farther, because I only have 25 feet, so I'm looking at literally states, you know, hammering this thing into my sidewalk. So can that be applied to this to farther back that sign up?
In terms of dealing with temporary signs as, as provided for in this ordinance, this provision would control, not conflicting provision that you just cited. So it would be not within the right-of-way.
I, thanks for the explanation. I didn't think so, but when something's said like that, it looks like it could be like a double enforcement. Another issue I have with right-of-way is that, I mean, literally today, I mean, I had no idea on my own plat how to read what my right-of-way was. So you got citizens now that are gonna have to try to figure out what their right-of-way is before the city comes and enforces that. I just don't agree with that. I think they're temporary signs. If someone needed to access my right-of-way, I can remove a sign in about five seconds. It's not that big a deal. I'll move on to four. Four should be struck because it was not in the original ordinances. Don't know why it was added, have no clue, don't know where we got that from. I will say this, as a matter of fact, I only know of one person that illuminated their signs in the last election cycle, and that was me. That doesn't need to be there, because it was never there. We don't need to be adding stuff to this. Number five, you mentioned that this got altered or was asked to be altered at the Planning Commission. This is laughable. My last election, I advertised three people, myself, my fellow council member, Mr. Pinkerton, and Gary Collins. By this, I would not be able to do anything but advertise myself. This is an absolute brutal attack on free speech. When you've got national, federal elections, statewide elections, county-wide elections, and city elections, you cannot limit someone to one sign, two signs, three signs. You can only limit them to how many races are there and what candidates do they wanna support. This shouldn't be here at all in any way, shape, or form. Number six, signs shall not be erected more than 45 days. This whole thing rests on free speech. This whole thing rests on the First Amendment. 30 and 45, that's just a lesser degree of limiting your First Amendment rights. Election cycles are over 100 days, at least for city elections. County, statewide, and especially federal are much, much longer election cycles, and to limit people to any days, honestly, is a violation of their rights, because the last presidential election, everyone knew who at least one party's candidate was gonna be for, forever. It was the incumbent. So I don't know where we went from 30 to 45 in my ordinance that I wanted to pass. I asked for 90. So I don't, I can't support, I can support one, two, and seven. I cannot support any of the other components of this at all. I don't, I don't think that's why we're here. I think we're here because we needed to change a, an ordinance that literally was invalid for almost 10 years, and to put more restrictions in place doesn't solve that problem and, and doesn't solve the free speech issues. So that's what I have to say, and I appreciate everybody's patience with that. Thank you.
Councilmember O'Rear, I want to clarify one point that, that you stated under, under the proposal, under paragraph R, sub-paragraph 1V, the last sentence in that paragraph says, "A lot may have more than one." says, "A lot may have more than one yard sign oriented to the same street for different events, garage sales, or political candidates." So you could have your sign, Mr. Pinkerton's sign, and some other person's sign, and another person's sign, and another. You could have six signs for different candidates. Councilmember Rocha.
The thing that I see as problematic is that we wanted to address this due to some pushback that we got about political signs. And then that became, well, let's just revamp everything and put it all under the umbrella of temporary signs. But it's hard to treat all of them equally. I agree with Mr. O'Rear, councilmember O'Rear, that going from thirty to forty-five days, I mean, it's nominal. Why? Why are we increasing it by fifteen days and calling that a good move? I don't, I don't understand the reasoning behind it. If we're going to limit to a number of days, why did we pick going from thirty to forty-five? Under R-one-one, directions to an event will not be included or would be restricted. So it says for signs advertising a public event, a construction sign, or a private directional sign, the sign shall be located at the site of the event for which the sign is being used or where the construction activity is occurring. A lot of times when there is an event occurring, you want a sign at the event site, but then you also want turn here, turn here, and sort of guiding people to your birthday party or your garage sale or your real estate open house, something along those lines. And if I'm reading that right, that would be prohibited. The thing I, okay, let's go to R. We're at seven. Signs shall be removed within seven days of the event, election, or sale. I can understand an election because it takes a little time for your workers to get out there and get all of your signs after they've blanketed the city. And I can understand, you know, leaving those out for seven days. But once you've had a garage sale and you've packed up all the extra stuff and taken it to Goodwill, sale's over. I don't see a reason a garage sale sign should have to be seen by everybody in the city for up to seven days. That can probably, that should probably be immediately removed at the end of the sale is how I would personally word that. Again, I think that's where we get into a little bit of trouble when we lump everything under temporary signs, which I believe I said was a good idea when we directed Mr. Hughes to do it. Now seeing it on paper, I can see how it's problematic. Number two, R-two, post signs, a real estate sign or similar sign advertising real estate for sale or lease provided the sign meets the following requirements. I have no problem with one or two. Actually, yes, I do have a problem with number two. The size of the sign shall not exceed six square feet. I think that's reasonable and customary for what I see now. The height of the sign exceed three feet is going to be problematic because any quality real estate sign is going to be higher than three feet. They shouldn't be lumped in with an H-Stan campaign-style sign that's only three feet off the ground. The real estate signs I'm thinking of have, you know, a solid post that can endure weather and are at least as tall as me, actually. So, you know, I think five or six feet would be reasonable for that, and that would cover most of the quality signs that I see. And then on number R-two-three, something that I see, on each lot, there shall not be more than one real estate sign oriented to the same street. I can see how that might, might be an issue if you have a corner lot and you're advertising from both streets for anybody that's coming. It's still considered the same lot, but directionally, you kind of want to catch the people coming from each side. So corner lots concern me. And then also, if someone has, owns a double lot or, you know, a triple lot, and they want to put a sign on each lot, it will appear to whoever's driving by that they're in violation. I can see how that might cause the city some time and resources. And then number four, under two, the sign shall be removed within seven days of the sale or lease of the real estate for which the sign is being used. I'm having a hard time understanding how anyone's going to enforce that unless they go on the MLS and find out, has this property actually closed? Is the sale done? Because, you know, things happen, things get relisted, we're not going to take the, you know, the, and they're just not going to take a sign down just to end up putting it back up. I just, does after the sale mean after solidly closing? Might want to look into that and make it a little bit more clear. And those are the issues I had.
Counsel? Councilmember Pinkerton.
So I'm in somewhat of agreement with comments that have already been made, so I won't go through all those. I did look through this. I do have a question, though. In putting this ordinance together, does it pass the test as far as any other legal ramifications we may see in the future?
I believe it does. There is, it is, it is difficult from a drafting standpoint to treat temporary signs the same. But the goal, if you remember, is that the, our U.S. Supreme Court-
Could you pull up the microphone, pull your microphone closer?
-had a ruling that, basically, the rule is that if you have to read the sign to know what the regulation is, then it's a problem, problematic from a First Amendment standpoint. So the, so the goal in drafting or revising this sign ordinance regarding temporary signs is to treat them all the same. But I agree that there are, that different temporary signs, you know, that everything doesn't fit neatly into one regulation. So what I have done is attempted to, to do that to the best of my ability to come up with a regulation that meets constitutional muster. And also remember that, you know, with any codes enforcement issue, it's always complaint, complaint-driven. And so you just want to have an ordinance that meets a constitutional standard, but also you make sure that everyone's playing by the, by the same rules. And we are allowed, the council is allowed to enact regulations that are time, place, and manner, as long as they're restrictions regarding time, place, and manner, as long as those are reasonable. And so what I have proposed to council is, is, you know, based upon my review of other ordinances, is what the court would consider reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions.
Yeah, I would, yeah, I don't disagree with you. I know it's a difficult task, and I would venture to say that of all the ordinances we have, the way it is and the way it will be, it's probably one of the hardest things to enforce because there are signs everywhere in the city. And you could challenge every one of them, and we have one code enforcer in the city, So again, I'm not in disagreement with some of the comments made, but I'm wondering at this point, what's the path forward? And is, are we going to propose amendments to review or vote as is? I'm sure there's some other comments, but I'm just concerned that we have a number of concerns and no path forward.
Councilmember Root.
Yeah, I was just about to say what councilmember Pinkerton's saying. It seems like there's a lot of changes. I'm not sure if these can get done before we pass this out at business meeting. I can't pass this as is. I'm not even sure if I can pass it forward to the business meeting just on the forty-five day, just on that alone, unless some other things, some other issues that I had. I think moving it back fifteen days does, does nothing. But with all the other concerns that the other council members have, I'm not sure, I think we're too far away to even perhaps make those changes, getting with Mr. Hughes and yourself in two weeks' time span. I'm not sure if the best option for us maybe is to table this until we see some of those changes. I'll throw that out there. I do have a question for Mr. Hughes. I'm not sure, I'm still confused as being more specific on particular signs, why making that more specific sets the city up for more, for litigation. It seems like if we keep all the signs the same, well, we know selling a home is different than a yard sale, a yard sale's different than a political sign. Most of them have some type of timeframe, but some might be ongoing. I don't know why we can't specifically itemize what sign and be specific, why that singling out sets us up for certain litigation. Maybe you can explain that better. It seems like the more specific we are as a city in these laws, the less liable we are, even at the way we are.
The way the ordinance is currently drafted, you have different regulations for different types of temporary signs. So the point is, let's say, for example, the duration requirement. I could have a yard sale sign up for X amount of time, but if I had a political sign, that's a different time. That's where we get into trouble. And so what I'm trying to do is, is lump everything into one set of regulations. And so that if you have a yard sign that we all think about, a typical yard sign that we all are accustomed to, you know that this is the regulation that applies regardless of what is on the sign, what it says, or you're advertising a political candidate, or you're advertising a yard sale or garage sale, or putting a directional sign, it's got, it's up for this amount of time before the event or the, or the election, and it's got to be down after this event. And there is no secret sauce to the suggested time requirements that I put into the ordinance. That's up for you to decide. My goal is to put you into position to come up with regulations that you believe are reasonable. Okay? So there's been a number of comments about forty-five days. You know, there is no secret to forty-five days. This council could decide if it's less or more. And so if, if that's the council's pleasure, we can certainly go back to work on adjusting the, some of the regulations as long as they are consistent, dealing with a number of different types of temporary signs.
Just, can I clarify one, can I clarify one point? I think one of the issues is, is that kind of why we landed here is because we had a requirement of a maximum time of thirty days for political signs, but effectively no limit, for example, for real estate signs. And that's the rub, is that we're, we have to be consistent or at least less restrictive on political signs.
That's correct.
Is that correct? Yeah. Councilmember Root, I'm sorry.
I would, I would almost make the motion that we table this, and I personally think there's too many changes. I think the more we dig in as a council, we're going to see more. I don't think that they can all be done to our liking in two weeks. I would make the motion that we table it and sharpen our pencils and come up with other things to where we could pass something that we all like and we all agree on.
Councilmember, is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay. I hear a second. Have a motion from councilmember Root with a second from councilmember Rocha to table this item to the next committee of the whole meeting. I, I have one, I don't mind tabling this item to the next committee of the whole, but I think what we're going to need to do, based on the variety of items and the number of items, is we're just going to have to make a commitment. This decision can only be made by council as a whole. No individual council member can go through this and mark it up and give it to the city attorney and say, I want it to look this way. It has to be decided in public during a call council meeting with an agenda on this item. So I think what we're going to have to do is it's up to us to sharpen our pencils and go back and figure out each individual item that we want to revise and what we would like for it to say. And then bring this back in front of council, go through it line item by line item, and let a council member, if they don't like it, move to amend each paragraph, and then council can debate that amendment and vote it up or down, and we can work our way through it. I think our city attorney should be present for that to help us not step in any legal pitfalls. But I think it's just going to take a lot of work. And if that's what we want to do, I, you know, I, actually, I think that's what is necessary for us to do, and possibly postponing it is a good idea for while we can think about what we actually want these things to say. So, councilmember O'Rear.
I just want to ask one question, Daniel, before we voted. There's, it looks like there's three different kinds of signage. You've got your exempt signs, you've got your, you've got your temporary signs, and then you have your permitted signs. Permitted signs, exempt signs have no language in them about the inability to put them in the right of way. Only the temporary signs have that. Is there a reason why temporary signs are, should be subjected to the right-of-way rule that the other two sets of signs are not?
That's, that's something that we can discuss in, as part of the-
Perfect. Thank you.
And there is a separate section already, that you've already identified, that deals with the location of signs, that says, "Unless otherwise stated in herein," which you identified the language regarding the ten feet from the setback or something to that effect. So there are rather regulations about location, but we can certainly look at a different type of regulation for temporary signs if that's what this council decides to do.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion to postpone? On the motion to postpone this item to the next committee of the whole meeting, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed signify by saying no. That motion to postpone carries by a vote of seven to zero and is unanimous and will be put on the agenda of the next committee of the whole meeting. Item seven-C, revised ordinance AXZ dash two-zero-two-one dash zero-one, property at two-fifteen to two-thirty-one Stenhouse Road, to allow the City of Simpsonville to provide sewer service connection. Mr. Derby, will you summarize, please?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Council, you got a memo regarding this, and I apologize to the attorney for last minute kind of sending this to you, I'm not sure I was doing this right. This is a development that was annexed back in 2021 off of Stenhouse Road. It is a townhome development. During that time, we were not in the Metro intergovernmental agreement regarding sewer. I kind of explained to y'all how that works, that when an annexation comes in, we coordinate with Metro about who's the most appropriate connection, Metro or the city regarding a site. And at that time, they kind of determine which one's the most appropriate location for the sewer or the avenue for sewer to go, and they take ownership. The ordinance that was approved in 2021 had the language, we're giving a copy of the original one, that's number eight, I believe, the Metropolitan Sewer Subdistrict. At this time, our Public Works Department has looked at the plans and determined that this sewer should be ours. But to do that, we have to reapprove this ordinance with that language removed. Basically, the second ordinance that I gave you was the exact same copy with number eight removed. So I can answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Derby. A motion is in order. Councilmember Hutchings.
Mayor, council, I make the motion to approve the proposal to revise ordinance AXZ dash twenty-twenty-one dash zero-one, property at two-fifteen dash two-thirty-one Stenhouse Road.
Have a motion from councilmember Hutchings with the second from councilmember Rocha. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed signify by saying no. That motion carries seven to zero and is unanimous. Item seven-D, direct the planning commission to consider amending the zoning ordinance to allow tattoo parlors and body piercing establishments. Councilmember O'Rear, will you summarize, please?
Yes. Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I actually had a call from a potential business owner who has done this for a long time and talked her through the process and everything about how it could, should work, talked to Mr. Derby, who's always very kind and patient with me, just to find out that, to my knowledge, the only type business that has exclusionary language in our ordinance are these tattoo parlors and body- language in our ordinance are these tattoo parlors and body piercing establishments. I don't have a tattoo. I don't ever intend to get one. But that's neither here nor there. I think it's just unusual that a city has picked practically one business and said, you're not welcome here. And I was talking to Mr. Derby, and I was like, you know, what I want to do is put this on the planning commission, let's go through the process here. This isn't guaranteeing that we're going to have anyone actually open one here. It just is fairness. It gives the ability to someone who, that's their profession. These are licensed people. They're not just coming up out of nowhere. This is a very heavily regulated industry. And I just think, what I'm trying to do here is really have that language struck from our zoning ordinances, to give the ability for folks that own these establishments to at least come to the city and have a fair chance at opening the business that they, their chosen profession.
Thank you. Motion is in order. Councilmember O'Rear.
All right. Mayor and council, I move that we direct the planning commission to consider amending the zoning ordinance to allow tattoo parlors and body piercing establishments.
Second.
Have a motion from Councilmember O'Rear with a second from Councilmember Pinkerton. No discussion from council. I'm opposed to this particular change to the zoning ordinances, which is not an explicit ban on tattoo parlors. It's effectively the same thing, because they're not in the allowed category, is how our zoning regulations work. We allow things, we don't particularly ban things. My concern is, is that even though this business owner might be a nice person who says they're going to, I believe the word that was used was, have a discreet establishment, I don't know how you regulate what it means to be discreet. We currently don't allow them. We're in agreement with several other cities in Greenville County that also don't allow them. Where they are allowed, for example, in one of our neighbors, they have, depending on how you ask the question of the Google Maps, there are anywhere from four to seven tattoo parlors in their city, and two of them are right on Main Street, a block from downtown. And based on how tattoo parlors would be categorized, they could be, this change would allow them to be anywhere in business general. So, for example, the space that is currently vacant, where the beauty salon was next to Exchange, it's in the same category as beauty salons, then that means they could go in in that space, literally across the street from the ice cream station. And I don't believe that fits the character of our city. They're certainly available, as close as our next-door neighbor, or out in the unincorporated parts of the county. So anybody who would like to get a tattoo, it's available to them to go and get that. But I, you know, for those reasons, I'm going to vote to not approve this motion. Further discussion? Councilmember Hutchings.
I too am not in favor of this. In the city, I would like to see, if we're going to consider something like this, I would like to see us look at what some of the cities have done and actually develop a special category for this, which has specifications as to where they can be located, et cetera. I don't, I don't like this general change that we're doing here without any, really any, I know in the language it says in here, a discreet establishment, but that is subject to interpretation, I would say. I think we need a little more specific on what we're allowing here before I would vote for it.
Councilmember O'Rear.
I'll take another shot at this. It's ironic to me that we're going to, you know, we're talking about dying on this hill, because we literally have language that allows strip clubs in this town. It's got a whole category of what we can do. You know, if we're going to be the morality police, let's be the morality police. Ban those. And you know, there's no prohibition on an abortion clinic in this town. So if they roll into town, we got to, I mean, maybe we don't want it here, but they're not prohibited from being here. Tattoo parlors are prohibited. And if you're going to talk about what the city might or might not want, go down to Grove Road and see what happens there every day. It's not fun. So if we're going to be the morality police, let's just be the morality police. Only I'm trying to do is level a playing field for entrepreneurs to do what they do for a living. And like I said, these people are professionals. They're, you don't just show up and do the thing. It's regulated. So I don't, I don't get the moral stance to this at all. This is nothing more than a fairness stance. And if we're going to start ranking things on the level of morality, I know there's people on this data set that have tattoos. So, I mean, I don't care if you have a tattoo. I just do care if you don't have the ability to do business in the city of Simpsonville, because you're literally the only business that can't. And that's what we need to consider. No one said there's going to be one on every block. There's guidelines under all these categories. They have to go through the same process. They're going to go through the planning commission, they're going to go through us. They still have, they have guidelines. It's not just show up and everyone says yes to them. All this done, let's just say this gets passed. Someone does come in, this young lady that I talked to, she may not ever come. No one may ever come. We don't know. But the, frankly, the inability for someone to do business, when really the only thing we're leaning on is do we want that kind of business here? But we actually have language for strip clubs. We don't want that business here either, but if they come, we got to talk to them. That makes no sense. So I would suggest that we move this on to the next, to the planning commission, let them talk about it, see what guardrails are there under the categories that this would fall under, and then work it through from there. And if we need to put in further guardrails for this, we can. We're not going to decide that today. So frankly, I'm kind of surprised that, you know, we're having opposition in committee of the whole meeting for this.
Councilmember Rocher.
I don't think the word morality has been used until now. I don't personally consider this a moral issue. If you want to get a tattoo, get a tattoo. But I will say that, having been in this seat for almost eight years, there are certain businesses that bring regulatory obligations on the city that we wouldn't otherwise have to deal with. And our city employees are already thoroughly taxed, thoroughly used, putting in their 40 and more. For an example, while I've been here, we've had an issue with a massage therapy place. There was a little bit more than therapy going on, and we had to decide to close that business. In the process of that investigation, our PD put in so many hours in trying to gather their evidence and make sure that they were clear going forward, that this business needed to be shut down, that there was criminal activity going on. Another example would be a vape store that we had, that had been in violation several times of selling products to minors. They're always, SPD is always, you know, checking for alcohol and tobacco. So, I mean, that's constantly got them running too. When it comes to tattoos and piercings, there are certain regulations that have to be in place, health regulations. I don't know about ages. None of my kids were interested in tattoos or piercings. But I know that there are certain regulations. I think it would add another layer to the city's burden. Secondly, just to clarify, the person that called had already spoken with Mr. Derby at the city level and was not satisfied with the answer that they got. So they proceeded to call council members, and I don't know how many others got calls. I assume that the same person that called Chad, sorry, Mr. O'Rear, called me. And the way it was presented to me was this person wanted to bring a medical establishment to the city, that they had, they were a counselor, and that they offered counseling services. And they weren't, they didn't understand why they were being denied such a good and, a good thing, bringing it to the city. And the longer they talked, the more they revealed that part of their counseling was arts, and that certain forms of arts that they used were to bring healing to people that had trauma. And one of those elements was, they wanted to be able to do tattoos on these people that they were counseling. And the longer the person talked, the more I figured out, this is a tattoo parlor, and just straight up said, so you want to open a tattoo shop. And then it got real quiet. And I said, have you run this by City Hall? Have you run it by our codes enforcement people? Yes. And then it came out, I didn't get the answers I want. I want you to put this on an agenda, and I want you to make this possible for me. This person had a failed business in Anderson, and now wanted to come to Simpsonville and attempt to open the same type of business. And so all sorts of red flags were going off for me, and I just wanted to make sure that the public in general knew that this wasn't just your typical, why don't you allow tattoo parlors call, because it wasn't presented that way. And the way that they went about it was just a little bit shady and threw up, like I say, a lot of red flags for me. I will also say that council took this issue up a couple of years ago, I want to say about two and a half to three years ago, we discussed this as a council. Now, since then, we do have new members, and I'm all for bringing it back to the table if those new members want to discuss it again. But when I put out a general poll to the city and said to my constituents through my Facebook page, my council Facebook page, is this something you would be in favor of, the bar was green, all the way no. I had very few yeses, we want this. Now, if that has changed, I would love to hear from the people that are behind it now. But my, my personal experience thus far has been that the constituents I feel represent, this is not in their scope of what needs to be offered as far as business licenses in the city. Again, nothing, nothing that has to do anything with, with moral issues. It's just an added burden of regulatory stuff that we would have to take on the burden for. That's all. Yep.
Councilmember Pinkerton.
Just for clarification, if this passed going forward, does it then go to the planning commission to review?
It's what the motion is to direct the planning commission to consider amending the zoning ordinance. So yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that's where that was heading.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So I have some, some further comments. I think the word surprised, that there would be pushback on this. As was mentioned by another council member, this is previously asked and answered, and was actually previously asked and answered several years ago by coming as a recommendation from staff, and council refused to take it up, didn't even make a motion. It was so unpopular with council at that time. They wouldn't make a motion, let alone get a second to that item. So if there is surprise, I would suggest that maybe there should have been some asking around to council to see if there was an appetite for approving this item. And as mentioned, I also have the same experience. I think this is trying to solve a problem that the citizens of Simpsonville don't have. It was asked by an external business, somebody who's proposing a business who is external to the city, not by the citizens of this city who are, who are asking for tattoo parlors. This is something being asked for by somebody who wants to open a business here, not something that the people have expressed a need for. So I remain opposed. Counsel? There's no further discussion? I'll call for the vote. On the motion to direct the planning commission to consider amending the zoning ordinance to allow tattoo parlors and body piercing establishments, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
I mean, I'm sorry. I'm going to call for a roll call vote. Let's do that. Mayor Clark, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember O'Rear?
Yes.
Councilmember Root?
No.
Councilmember Williams?
No.
Councilmember Rocher?
No.
Councilmember Pinkerton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hutchings?
No.
Mayor Shoemaker?
That motion fails by a vote of two yeses and five nos. Item 7E, direct the planning commission to consider amending the zoning ordinance to include specific review of infrastructure, transportation, density, environmental impact, and school capacity before approval of a residential development. Councilmember O'Rear, will you summarize, please?
Yes, thank you. I had pretty significant discussions with Mr. Derby, trying to hammer this thing out to make sure, try to get things right. And of course, you know, I think, you know, we mentioned in the last one, you know, the city doesn't have any stomach for that. The city certainly has stomach for development. And what these are, these are not, and to Mr. Derby's credit, he guided me through this, these are, it's a maybe. It's not a hard and fast. So any of these four bullet points you have in front of you are not, they have to be met. These are, are things that would guide the planning commission through there, and the city planner, the city director, to guide them through the process when they're looking at residential development. And these are all general, general things. Some of them are already being done, per Mr. Derby, several of them are already being done as a matter of, of what they do. This is just putting it in writing. Do I need to read the bullet points out? Would that be helpful, or do you want me to wait on that? Do you want me to read the bullet points?
You can, if you like.
Yeah. And there's four. And the fourth one is, to me, was the one that, and I'll get to it. First is, the way it reads is submitted residential developments may be approved, or, am I, am I doing this right, John? Maybe, yes, may be approved if the developer and city have completed a review to ensure the following are met. Adequate existing infrastructure, transportation systems exist to support the project. That's already being done. It's being done to the city, that's being done by the DOT and the developer. This is putting that in writing for the planning commission to use as a tool to make sure we look at that and make sure that's happening. The project is compatible with surrounding land use density, that's also already being looked at and done. This puts it in writing. Third is the project is compatible with sites, environmental conditions, such as, but not limited to wetlands, flooding, endangered species in our habitat, and historic sites or cemeteries. That is also, I feel, being done. This puts it in writing as a guidance. And the fourth one, and this came up because, Councilmember Rocher, if you remember, we spoke of a development out Harrison Bridge Road. And you made, you made a really great point that night. And the point was, if this is approved, Plain Elementary cannot handle the students. So, I'll put any public school within the attendance zone of the site must be at or below 95% capacity. And, and I don't want to put words in Mr. Derby's mouth, but I read the email, and I think the, his contact at the school system felt like that was a positive thing, because it gives them the ability to kind of know ahead of time what we are on approving, if it's going to add population, because you don't just need a school and build it the next week. It's a three-year process or so. And these are, like I said, these are general guidelines to put in, in actual writing to, to ensure they're looked at as a guiding tool for residential development. And that would be about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion is in order.
So I'll make the motion, Mayor and council. I make the motion to direct the planning commission to consider amending the zoning ordinance to include specific review of infrastructure, transportation, density, environmental impact, and school capacity before approval of residential development.
Second.
Have a motion from Councilmember O'Rear with a second from Councilmember Root. Discussion? Councilmember Rocher?
I have a question. If, if numbers one through three have already, if you already know, they're already being done, they're, they're all covered by various ordinances and governmental guidelines that we already have to abide by, then really wouldn't the motion just be for number four? And I guess, if the public schools want three years of projected growth, which we don't know whether or not we're going to have unless the growth actually comes and the projects are approved, that's pretty much putting a three-year moratorium on any growth in this entire area. Because Greenville Public Schools are already at capacity. And so if you're asking for a moratorium, which I think that's what it would be, then that's probably what we need to vote on. But much like SCDOT, the public schools are reactionary. They are not proactive. And if they do have the funding... And if they do have the funding, I'm gonna say the hard part out loud, it's going to go to administration, it's going to go to the top-heavy part of public schools, it's not going to go to build a new school. And you can look at Fountain Inn, we just built that, everything up, around it built up and it's at, it's at capacity, we're ready for another school. So essentially, I just can't imagine how that would work, we'd have to look into our crystal balls and decide who's coming, where's the growth gonna happen in the next three years, let the public school system know, which, again, we, we're not gonna know that. So, I'm super confused by all of this.
Councilmember Hutchings.
I was gonna see if I could explain, if you don't mind.
Councilmember Hutchings, first.
I have a question for Mr. Derby, for my, how many of these items would you say are addressed in the current comprehensive plan that we consider in, in the process of?
I would say all of those. All of them?
All of them. But, is there anything you see here that would enhance what we're doing now as far as looking at anything in more detail or?
No, again, the, the comprehensive plan's a, it's fluid, it's a guiding document and those, it's not a checkoff, but it is just a tool we use to kind of pick through there to help make those decisions based off those, there's more than just those four, but of those four bullets to kind of help make our decision about annexation, rezonings, and developments. So, I don't think what else we could add besides that.
Councilmember O'Rear?
Yes, my understanding, these are best practices.
Correct.
That's why I wanted to put them in writing. I mean, I mean, I know people do things as, as something on a daily basis, but it's, it's a guideline and a, and a structure and for, for Councilmember Rocha, it's, these are not hard and fast, these are not, if you see this number, you absolutely can't, that's what the Planning Commission's for. They can say, well, you know what, I get it, but, these are guidelines and they're just being, best practices being put in words in our zoning ordinances. These aren't anything controversial, I think we, I think all agree on that. It's, like I said, there's nothing in here that makes them adhere to anything, it gives guidance and it puts it in writing.
Councilmember Rocha.
If it were just guidance for Planning Commission, you could just lay this on a copier and make copies for everybody on the commission and say, "We'd like you to consider these things." What it says is that they are proposed additions to zoning ordinances. Ordinances are city laws. So, you're actually asking for additions to city laws and all of this is already built in. So, I'm not understanding why this needs a vote.
Councilmember Pinkerton.
Similar vein, I actually had some questions about this myself, a little confused because I was concerned, it says for additions to the zoning ordinance, but it doesn't say which ordinance. I was, where does this go? And, again, the language is so broad after that and maybe it's already, some of these are already considered, some of these things confuse me just by reading it, by looking at it and say, "Provide adequate infrastructure and transportation systems." I mean, that's, it's pretty broad, I could go forever trying to figure out what's, what's adequate and what's not adequate. But, again, again, my question in this is, where does this go? Is this to the councilman's point, it says it's going to an ordinance, but where do you expect it to go in the ordinances? If anywhere? One second.
The beginning of the zoning ordinance has Article I introduction, there is general provisions, which is basically the purpose of the zoning ordinance, and it has A through, excuse me, A through M, and those are kind of where we can put those in as below that. What we follow is what, what the zoning ordinance is to law, what we have to do as far as when we consider applications for annexation, rezoning, and development is kind of look at it, make sure we are following what this document is intended for. So, it's kind of the applicability of the zoning ordinance.
So, to, to pass this, wouldn't this need a motion to address that particular ordinance? Am I asking that question right? Because it looks pretty broad, I'm not sure where this was to go.
I think we can ask our city attorney that question, but I believe that this would be directing, really effectively directing Mr. Derby to figure out where it goes and put that in front of the Planning Commission. Is that correct, Mr. Hughes?
Yeah. That's correct, I mean, would go under their evaluation as to whether or not to approve or not approve a development that comes into the city. And so, they would, if this were to be adopted, it would be part of their criteria. And I would have some concern, I'll just, you know, as number four, I've got some concern about the, the issues that would create with a developer trying to come into the city. I just, council needs to be careful with number four. And I believe three, one through three, I think has already been, and I don't have the comprehensive plan in front of me, but Mr. Derby can help us there, but all with traffic analysis studies and covers number one, and then the comprehensive plan with covers two and three. Anyway, but the number, I, I think those are all covered already in their Planning Commission's evaluation and then this council's evaluation. Number four is, it gives me some concern.
If I can ask a question regarding that, if we were to codify this or include it in our comprehensive plan and somehow that gets interpreted by the Planning Commission to be, oh, the school's at 97%, we need to, council doesn't want us to approve this and they turn it down, then we could potentially have a legal issue with that?
That would be a concern. It's, it's also, just from a practical standpoint, when they apply for preliminary approval, if you apply the 95% standard, it could apply, but if later down the road, when school rosters are set right before the school year, you could be well below that or above it. And so, you could have a townhome community where it's basically a retirement community where they don't have any children, so it doesn't place any stress on schools. And, you know, school zones change, you could have homeschool students, charter students, I mean, I see, I see issues with the application.
So, to, to make some comments on that, my understanding of the Greenville County school system and how they go about doing business is, in fact, school systems nationwide, they pretty much target to be full. Because if they're not full, they don't get state and federal funding like they want to get. So, the answer as to why Fountain Inn High School was putting in temporaries the year they opened was because they anticipated that they were gonna have this many students to be full and exactly what Mr. Hughes said, oops, enrollment was higher than that, and yes, they are reactive, but they reacted by putting in temporaries, which was pretty quick. So, capacity's a little bit of a fluid question with the school system. And I think it's, I, I think addressing school capacity directly in our zoning ordinance is getting into their lane and I don't think that's a good idea. Mr. Derby, can you clarify on that at all?
Correct, there's nothing in there, I can find in our comprehensive plan, talks about a number without capacity. It does say that it's part of our job to coordinate with the school system, I do that regularly with developments with Mr. Lynn Baker.
So, other than a number, we're already coordinating with the school system?
Correct. What he explained to me after Mr. O'Rear brought this to me is how that, that number of the capacity that you see on their table, that does not take into consideration, if it is at 95, 96, it doesn't take into school choice. Like Plain Elementary could be at 98%, but 30% of those could be school choice kids that are zoned for other locations. So, he said that was kind of hard to gauge when they have school choice mixed into there, it was just straight zoned, schools, that'd be easier to nail that number down to a percentage. But, as far as in the comp plan, the other three are definitely discussed, and therefore is discussed, but not with the number value of that, but that is part of our day-to-day operations to notify all providers, metro, any provider has at a city besides a school about future developments, to keep them abreast of that.
Okay, thank you. Council? Councilmember Root.
Yeah. What if, let's say a future council down the road decides to put a 600-unit development that's gonna have 1,000 kids that's gonna go to the local school, at what point, let's say the city passed it, at what, what point does the county or the school system step in and say, "The school can't take, you know, that, that amount of traffic." What, what overlap does the county, would they have restraints on a city doing that?
From discussions with them, they say they will find a seat for every child in Greenville County. They go through the SAC, the Settlement Administration Committee, part of their review, dealing with DOT and every other infrastructure or agency involved, and they do a review of what they're proposing and they do a timeline, how long this will take. Prime example is the settlement, that's a very large development, that's probably a six to eight-year completion date for that development, 900 homes in total. So, they have already put that on their three, four-year plan to adapt to the amount of kids they're gonna be having there. So, they're, they're very proactive, I wish DOT was that way, but I feel like Greenville County School does a good job of anticipating the growth. But, as far as turning kids away, you know, at full capacity, I'm not sure how that goes. He, the contact I have there never, you know, advised that they would say, "We're done, cancel the project, we can't, we have no seats." He's never told me that. So, they do find a way to get them into a seat.
But, what is your opinion on point four, if we were to put that into an ordinance? Do you think that the city might be overstepping in that, maybe claiming authority that we don't have by wording that, and would it be problematic?
I see, I do share the same concern with Mr. Hughes about having that number in there. I mean, it is a very strong concern we have whenever development comes in that we're getting that number, but going with that school choice not being able to get us that exact true number of 95, I have a little problem with that.
I would ask the council member to maybe take out the verbiage of 95 and you could still have something in there to the fact that the city can work with the school system on future questions and that way, it does get your amendment passed. I think that might be the holdup, if I'm reading, council, that specific number does give me pause as well.
Yeah, fine answer, I, I get, I get the concern, I just, you know, I think people lose sight of that word "may" up there. You know, the thing is, if it comes up and, and we go to the school and the school's like, "Ah, we still have the seats," or it's almost gonna be impossible, we're gonna put up four portables, that doesn't stop what we can do, this isn't stopping that, it's just having them look at it to consider, 95% is a moving target strictly because, I mean, look what we got going on now, we've got developments that are half-developed, that have been in development for years. You can't, it, it's a number because it needs, you need to put a number, what are you gonna put? Two-thirds? What are you gonna put? "I think it might be full," you need to put a number. School system could say, "Right now, we're at 95, we might drop to 93." That's what the Planning Commission can say. If it comes through and John says, "Hey, my contact said this school right now is at 97." The Planning Committee can say, "Okay, let's take that as a variable as to how we're gonna move forward and proceed." It's not saying that's a disqualifier. None of these are disqualifiers, these are just guidance tools, that being the last one. 95, the number itself, is the same thing, it's a guidance tool. Because you hit 95% capacity, like, go look at your email account, if your, your inbox says you hit 95% of your memory, you're like, "I've got to make adjustments here because it's gonna top out pretty quick." That's all I'm asking, is look at it. And if, if someone says, school says, "Look, we're 98 and we don't see us going backwards on this," the Planning Commission looks at it and goes, "Well, let's really take a good look at," like, like I referenced Councilmember Rocha when we debated that, that project at Harrison Bridge Road. That was a, it wasn't a hard and fast number, it was just flat, they don't have the capacity because we changed, the builder, the developer changed his plans from a 55-plus community to an anybody community and the school that might have planned for that now has a whole different neighborhood that they never planned for. This gives the guidelines and some guardrails for the Planning Commission to on the fly go, "Oh, crap, it's gonna be at least 99% now because we didn't anticipate this new type of zoning." It gives them the ability to go, "Hey, John, Mr. Derby, here's what we've hit, here's what we think we're hit." And talk about it, nothing's saying, and we talked about this, nothing's saying you can't do something because of any of these four, it's just saying, make sure you look at these, some of you are looking at, it puts it in language, in general language, like Mr. Pinkerton was saying, just make sure you look at these, just kind of a hard, a general rule to look. The last one, the number could be 90, could be 99, doesn't really matter, it's all a moving target, it's, you know you're getting pretty dead gum close when you're in the, when you're at 95, 93. Just take it as, as a consideration when you're moving forward because all of these developments, they buy land, they sit on their zoning and then pop, six years later, here they come. Was that planned for six years before? And now, so this would say, okay, we're gonna look at this, here's what we're looking at, what are we gonna do to the school? Oh, crap, well, we didn't plan for it back then, now we have to plan for it now, now it's gonna be 102%. Okay, we got, we got some things to talk about here. That's all this is, I think, I don't want anyone to get lost in that we're trying to, to absolutely hard and fast, it's not a moratorium, this is no more, this, this is just guidelines, they may do this, look at it. If they don't, if they look at it and all of these are met or are met, it doesn't matter, they still get to make the decision, just making sure they look at it and think about it. And that's really it.
All right, so, where you, where I'm confused is you want to be specific and put it into law, but then you're saying it's guidelines, but we've already proved the guidelines are being done. So, either you update the guidelines with specifics that they go by, that's what you said, you want teeth, I can't approve, I'm for this, I'm for giving teeth to this, but if this, I will never, and I've said this, as long as I've sat here, I will never put the city in any type of lawsuit, I'm still gonna stick by that. Our city attorney is here tonight, he said that makes it probable. I'm asking if you would remove the 95%. You still get your four and it's still something that they'll look at, it's in, it's in an ordinance, I cannot pass it with the 95 because I'm afraid that...
If council's amenable to that, I'll be happy to.
Okay. I think you have to.
Yeah. So, I'll make a motion to amend the current motion to read in bullet point number four. Daniel, will you wanna help me, I need, you think I need to work this, taking out the 95? It's, it's already in the, the criteria. I mean, they're, they're already evaluating the stress a development has on a school when Planning Commission and then council considers development. I mean, I don't, I don't understand why we needed it all. So, I, beyond that, I don't know if I can help you. What being said, I will...
Mr. Hughes, his, his motion was to amend bullet point number four by taking out the 95, is that a proper motion?
Yes. So, be read, any public school within attendance zone, let me, let me get back, motion be to amend four to evaluate the capacity of the public schools within the attendance zone of the site. Does that make sense?
All right, hold on one moment, let me get this down. So, your motion is to amend item four by taking out 95% and changing it to evaluate school capacity?
Correct.
So, so I have a motion from Councilmember O'Rear and a motion to amend from Councilmember O'Rear with a second from Councilmember Root. Discussion on the motion to amend. Councilmember Pinkerton.
I think I just heard it a minute ago, but what we're about to vote on is already in the Planning Commission's... in the Planning Commission's purview.
Counsel? Councilmember Williams?
I'm also, I'm also a little, not really confused, but if it's, if it's a guideline that they already go by, when approving a development, I still don't understand why we want to make an ordinance for it.
Councilmember Roche?
Yeah, again, this is a zoning ordinance, an addition proposed. So this, what's on the screen here for the public and in front of us is different than the memo that we received for this item on the agenda. That might be causing some confusion because what's in front of us says, "Proposed additions to the zoning ordinance. Purpose: to add broader language to the City of Simpsonville zoning ordinances to ensure that the city is equipped for and capable of servicing any and all new residential development." That is very specific, and everything below it is stuff that we are already doing. And there's a couple of points about infrastructure and transportation systems.
Point of order. We're discussing the amendment for item four.
Okay. So let me ask then, if, are we just looking at number four now? Are you striking one through three? Are you striking all this language?
This motion is only to amend the wording of item number four by taking out 95% and replacing it with evaluate school capacity. So then we, once we vote on this amendment, then we'll come back and vote on the whole thing. So.
Okay.
Counselmember Root?
Withdrawn.
Withdrawn. Okay. Any further discussion on the motion to amend? On the motion to amend item four by striking 95% and replacing it with evaluate school capacity, all those in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
All opposed signify by saying no?
No.
All right. So we're going to need a roll call vote again. Clerk Clark?
Councilmember O'Rear?
Yes.
Councilmember Root?
No. Oh, is this still on the-
This is the amendment.
This is the amendment.
I thought we were back to the original motion. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Roche?
No.
Councilmember Pinkerton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hutchings?
No.
Mayor Shoemaker?
No.
That motion carries by a vote of four yeses and three nos, and that item is amended. So now the new motion before us is, as shown on the screen, with the amendment to item four in the supplementary materials from council that changes it from, by striking 95% and evaluating school capacity. So we're back to discussing the main motion. Discussion? Right. If there is no further discussion, then on the item to direct the Planning Commission to consider amending the zoning ordinance to include specific review of infrastructure, transportation, density, environmental impact, and school capacity before approval of residential development as amended, all those in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
All opposed signify by saying no?
No.
So as I heard it, there were two nos, I mean, two yeses, Councilmember O'Rear and Councilmember Root. Were there any other yeses? The remainder of council voted no. The item fails by a vote of two yeses and five nos. Item 7F, Metro Connects Intergovernmental Agreement. Administrator Graceley, will you summarize, please?
Mayor and council, bringing this matter to your attention for a couple of reasons. The main one being that there is a sewer line that serves only Kemet, which is not in the city limits, but has always been part of our sewer collection system. That is very antiquated and would need to be replaced and upgraded should we continue to serve Kemet. The cost of that would be approximately $1.5 million. The only alternative to that would be to run a new connection staying on that side of Interstate 385 and getting Metropolitan Sewer, Metro Connects, to agree to let us use a portion of their collection system to run that waste to the ReWah Main. I know this is very confusing. The City of Simpsonville has a collection system for sewer, as does Metro Connects. Metro Connects is generally around the periphery of every municipality in Greenville County. ReWah, of course, is the organization that treats the wastewater. And they have sewer mains throughout the county that collect, that are, further collect and relay that waste to their treatment facilities that are located in various locations around the county. We had a discussion with Metro Connects, and they would have to give up part of their sewer capacity to us in order to allow us to continue to serve Kemet and flow through their collection system. They are not amenable to that, understandably, because they're giving up a portion of their capacity at no financial benefit to them. So we've been working on a compromise for many, many months. Director West and I have had several meetings with Metro Connects. And what we have agreed to pending council's approval is to enter into this intergovernmental agreement to allow Metro Connects to be the sewer provider for Kemet. That's it in a nutshell. Just to give you a little bit of information, we generate approximately $50,000 annually for our sewer collection system by serving Kemet. They pay fees based on their average daily flow. That is, it sounds like a lot of money, but when you look at the cost of relaying that line under 385, and even considering whether or not SCDOT would allow us to do that, it doesn't then appear to be a lot of money. So the cost to Metro Connects to serve this would be substantially less than that. They are willing to do it at their expense. And so we believe, Director West and I, and our city engineer, all believe that this is the best resolution for avoiding an environmental disaster if that line were to fail while we're looking for funding to relay that line, which I don't think is a good use of the city's resources to do that.
Thank you, Administrator Graceley. A motion is in order. Councilmember Hutchings?
Mayor and council, I'll make a motion to approve the Metro Connects Intergovernmental Agreement as presented.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Hutchings, with a second from Councilmember Williams. Discussion? Councilmember O'Rear?
Just one quick question for Administrator Graceley. So, I mean, that was a lot of stuff taken at one time. I guess basically, for what we lose in income, we make up in expense. That's it. Thank you.
Yeah, probably a hundredfold, probably.
Yes, thank you.
Because not only is it the expense of approximately a million and a half dollars to get the line where it is compliant with current C-MOM standards and, you know, trying to avoid, like I said, we're, we're very nervous about what could potentially happen given the age of that line. And we believe that there are parts of it that are already starting to either erode completely or collapse. Yes. Not only is it that initial expense to replace that, but it is then the ongoing expense to maintain that part of the collection system, which, because it's under the interstate, is very, very difficult to do.
That's what I thought I heard. So thank you.
Yes.
Councilmember Roche?
So this would essentially be relieving the city of potential issue and a burden. We wouldn't be responsible at that point at all. It would be a deal between Kemet and Metro Connects.
Correct. The only responsibility we would have once Metro Connects has that connection for Kemet up and running is we would need to pay the cost to abandon that line under 385. And there are some costs associated with that.
What would those costs be?
Director West, do you remember specifically, I think we're less than $100,000 to abandon that, maybe not even anywhere near there?
Yes, it's less than 100. It's just some flowable field to plug both ends and call it good.
And cap it at both ends.
Councilmember Pinkerton?
Yeah, I missed some of your language when I was reading this, "abandon." Did you fill the line?
It'll be plugged on both ends. We may not be able to get all the flowable field under 35, but DOT will require us to plug the ends. Okay, it's a good idea. I just wanted to make sure that was correct.
Councilmember Hutchings?
The connection under, under the interstate is not part of this, too.
We would be eliminating that connection. Basically, what this intergovernmental agreement does is it, it conveys the ownership of the collection system for Kemet to Metro Connects. And they would have to build the new connection at no cost to us. They would, they would do that at their own expense. So it alleviates us from having to make any costly repairs or replacement of the existing very aging sewer line under I-385. But we would lose a customer for the sewer collection system in turn. We would be relinquishing that to Metro Connects.
On the motion to approve the Metro Connects Intergovernmental Agreement as presented and move this item to the agenda of the next business meeting, all those in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
All opposed signify by saying no. That motion carries seven yeses, zero nos, and is unanimous. Item 7G, parking lot lease for Verden Lots. Administrator Graceley, will you summarize, please?
Yes, thank you, mayor. Counsel, as you all are aware, we are in lease agreements with two entities for downtown parking, one being the Verden Properties on West Curtis Street at the corner of West Curtis and Maple, and the other being with Temple Baptist for the parking along Trade and North Maple. I'm sorry, South Maple. Those agreements have been in place for quite some time. The attorney for the Verden Trust has redrafted the parking lease agreement and is asking for a substantial increase to the city in those lease payments. It is my job to bring that to council and have you all consider it. I know parking is at a premium and we need it, but at the same time, this would jeopardize the agreement that we have with Temple Baptist for the amount we pay them for the parking lease. So I have some concerns about fairness, considering the size of those lots is approximately the same. The number of parking stalls that we get out of each of those locations is roughly the same. And so, you know, I would ask council to consider that as you review this lease agreement that is proposed.
Okay. Motion is in order. Councilmember Root?
Mayor and council, I'd make the motion that we approve the parking lease for Verden Lots.
Second.
Question from Councilmember Root, with a second from Councilmember Pinkerton. Discussion? Councilmember Root?
Have they clarified to you or hinted to you what they would do with this property if we were to not lease it from them?
I don't think they have any immediate plans. I can tell you that since 2018, I have tried to get a sales contract with them to sell the property to the city. That was an initiative of council when I first came in, and unfortunately, they are not willing to sell the property. That would be the easiest resolution for all of us. We could pay them a fair price for the property. We would assume it, and then we could make permanent improvements on it. I would imagine we would keep it as parking. I don't think we would want to do anything else there. But the reason we've never made permanent improvements is because we, all they would agree to was leasing us the property for use as public parking. This agreement would give us right of first refusal. If they did decide to sell the property, we would have the opportunity to buy the property before they would allow anybody else the opportunity to make an offer on it. I don't know, based on my conversations over the past seven-plus years, that there is going to be a time in the near future where they would be willing to sell it. So I guess the matter for council to determine is what the city is willing to pay to continue to lease that every month. What they are proposing, as you can see in the agreement, is $1,800 per month, which is a lot of money, I believe, for property that, you know, we are leasing just to provide parking to downtown. Of course, it's up to you to decide what that value should be based on the need. I know we have a lot of parking needs that are not even being met by the two current leases that we have. So, you know, there's a bit of a tightrope that you have to walk here, you know, to be good stewards of the city's money and at the same time, provide a service that is desperately needed by the businesses and residents of the city.
I would be worried. That's almost double-
It's more than double.
And I'm afraid we'd get, if this got out, the other place that we're leasing is, why wouldn't they ask for the same? And we're going to get to the point where we can't afford parking. So that is my concern. My concern, first of all, is $1,800 price tag. My second concern is having to pay that twice now, and we've more than doubled the money on the budget for this. So, yeah, I would not be in favor at all. I hope, I hope maybe this is the first phase of negotiation. I haven't spoken to them, obviously, but I hope maybe they're testing the market and they'll come back to us. But, yeah, I would just, I wouldn't even consider that. And then I think we've set ourselves up to negotiating the other properties as well.
That would be my concern as well.
Thank you.
Councilmember O'Rear?
And not knowing, being newer, not knowing the previous agreement, is number two different? Or have we always had the ability to charge fees for special events, parking things?
That would be new. That's not anything that we had in the previous. The previous lease agreement was drafted by our city attorney at the time, David Holmes, and presented to the Verdens for their approval. The lease amount currently is $650 per month, so this would be almost tripling what we are currently paying. I'm not sure where those figures came from. I think it's based on what they perceive as the value of the property, which, like I said, I think the city would be willing. I think this council would entertain purchasing the property so that we have, you know, created parking that would be there well into the future.
So what I'm, I guess what I'm getting at is, we could make money off of this if we chose to charge people to park. And I'm not saying I'm in favor of that at all. I'm just saying that's a possibility.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. And as you know, there are, well, there's at least one private property owner that currently does that, you know. But there, there's a cost to doing that, too. And so you would have to offset, which I know that's not what you're proposing that we do.
Oh, no.
But just as a consideration, yes, it would, you know, it would not be well-received by the community or the businesses. We do pay this with our hospitality and accommodations tax revenue. It comes out of that special revenue account budget because we believe that it is in support of tourism. We're bringing people into the city that are not necessarily residents of the city to shop and dine and enjoy being in our community for special events or for just, you know, any average evening. So that is where the money would come from, but I do have concerns about the amount that they're requesting.
Thank you.
Councilmember Roche?
I think it's important to point out in number eight that they also want compensation to be increased by 4% on the renewal date of each two-year term. So this is just going to keep increasing the burden. I know personally, if I were to come down there and have to pay to park in a city that's small, I would definitely find a place where I didn't have to pay and walk, because everything within a couple of blocks is within walking distance. So I don't see how we would recoup $1,800 a month.
Counsel? Councilmember Hutchings?
Especially, is your opinion that the other leasor would want to match this rate if we approved this?
That would be my fear, is that they would say, "What is the difference between the lot you're leasing from us and the lot you're leasing from this particular owner?" Like I said, they're very comparable in size. They're both gravel lots that the city maintains. There really are no differences, other than one is on one end- There really are no differences other than one is on one end of Trade Street, I mean, one end of Maple, and the other is on the other end of Maple. So they service different areas. I will also point out that with the Temple lease, Vaughn's Food Hall is paying a portion of that back to the city. So we pay, the lease agreement is with us. We pay the church, and then we get some of that money back from Vaughn's Food Hall because of the proximity. It serves mostly their customers, so they've been willing to pay for that.
Is this negotiable, or is this final deal?
This is what they've given me. I have expressed my concerns about the amount. They've asked that I take it to council for consideration, so if you all would like to offer an amended version of this for me to take back to them, based on a number that you're comfortable with, I think I could certainly do that. I don't think it's going to end negotiations completely if we countered this proposed agreement.
Councilmember Pinkerton?
Yeah, I haven't done my own parking analogy, but first of all, how many cars does this particular property hold? And if we did not approve this and let it go, would that amount be able to be absorbed locally without too much of an impact, knowing that there's a big concern about parking in the city? During the day, I don't see it as a big issue. Maybe at night, it's a little bit different, I don't know, but has anybody looked into it to see if you said, well, no, we're not approving this, that that number of spaces could be easily absorbed in the surrounding area?
There aren't any other public parking lots in the surrounding area, so there would be the fear that property owners would then start to post no parking and tow cars if they didn't want. You know, the issue is, with a paved surface particularly, if it's owned privately, there, you know, there's wear and tear on the asphalt, as you know. And so some owners may not want to fill that gap, and if cars start parking there, then that might lead them, like I said, to prohibit it and possibly tow cars. It's approximately 55 stalls. I don't think we could squeeze any more out of there. I think the layout that we have is the best we're going to get. Public Works was able to lay that out for us years ago when we first entered into this agreement. You know, one thing you're combating with parking always is the perception that people want to be right by the business that they're going to be going into. And so taking this away, you know, limits parking for businesses like Sweet Sippin, any of those businesses along South Main Street that are not able to park on South Main Street, because that's very limited as well. And then there's the added concern that when we're doing the construction on South Main Street, people would have to have somewhere to park in order to, you know, not get further and further away from their destination. I think the reason this agreement was entered into many years ago is because there is a lot of value there for the city. I don't know that the value is $1,800 a month. You know, by comparison, we're leasing an entire building to someone for a business for just slightly more than that. And so there's really, what does the market support for this type of use? I think it's not this amount of money. But then if the owner says, well, then we're not going to allow you to use it anymore, there would be that consideration as well.
So in your opinion, the value of the parking there is really based on what we're already paying them now and not a penny more?
No, I think that there would be an argument to be made that we could bring them up to what Temple Baptist is being compensated for that lease, which is $1,000 a month. So I would be hesitant to recommend to council going above that number, because, like I said, they're roughly the same size and use.
Well, the art of negotiation is negotiation, so why don't we go back to them and give them that number then? A motion?
I think you would just need to amend the agreement to state that amount.
I think you'd need a motion if you want to make that motion, Ms. Pinkerton?
Yeah.
Or, yeah, that could just be part of the, we don't have a motion yet, I've been talking all this time. Or do we?
No, we have a motion.
Oh, okay.
You have a motion.
Okay.
So I propose a motion to reduce the cost of this parking lease to $1,000 a month.
Motion from, a motion to amend from Councilmember Pinkerton with a second from Councilmember Hutchings to reduce the amount, the lease amount, from $1,800 to $1,000.
Point of order.
Point of order from Councilmember Rocher.
So the new amount has not been agreed upon yet. It's just their proposal to us. We're only paying $650 a month right now, so it would need to be worded that we would be increasing, and we would counteroffer to $1,000 per month.
I think that's well received. Can you restate your motion in that way, Councilmember Pinkerton?
I'll do my best. I propose a motion to amend the parking lease for Verden Lots to...
Counteroffer.
Counteroffer of $1,000 a month.
All right, so I have a motion from Councilmember Pinkerton with a second from Councilmember Hutchings to amend the lease agreement with a counteroffer of $1,000 per month. So we are now discussing the subsidiary motion to amend. Councilmember Hutchings?
This is not necessarily on the amendment, per se, but...
Well, then, we need to stick with the amendment. Okay? So if there's no further discussion on the amendment, then all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes. All opposed signify by saying no. That motion carries by a vote of seven to zero. And that is a subsidiary motion to amend to $1,000, the counteroffer $1,000. So now, the amended motion is to approve the parking lease for Verden Lots by counteroffering $1,000 per month. Discussion?
Now.
Now, Councilmember Hutchings?
We have a sharing agreement with the business now with the other leased lot, correct? We share the cost.
Correct.
Is there any possibilities that we could do something like that with this lot as well? We have several businesses I know that need parking, you know, on Main Street, and they probably depend on this lot right now, I think.
If you recall, I think, I lose track of time, but I think it's been about two years ago, I think it was before our new council members joined, there was discussion about adding 30-minute parking on South Main Street to try to encourage turnover of those spaces quicker, because there was so much use among all of those businesses. And at the time, we discussed this lot, and we talked about asking for some cost share from the businesses. The difficulty there is, there are so many different businesses, and if you ask of one and they agree, and then you have three others that don't, and then another one maybe that does, or wants to pay less than the first person, it just gets very confusing. What happened with the Temple lot is that we were approached by, at the time, the warehouse at Vaughn's, to help them solve some of their parking issues. And they were looking at that property, and they said, would the city be willing to work out a lease with the church? And we would be willing to pay a third of that. It would be for everyone's use, but, you know, we know that primarily, you know, our business would be using it. It wouldn't restrict spaces just for their use, but they knew that they would be, given the proximity of it, using it more than anyone else. And so that really was born out of their desire to have parking that was close to their business, and they asked the city for help. And we obliged and came to that agreement with the church. This is a little bit different, because, like I said, there are just so many different businesses clustered in that area that I don't think we would ever get 100% participation.
Administrator Graceley, do you happen to know when the current lease expires?
So it automatically renews every two years. I don't think it's set for, I can't recall the exact date that it would expire. I think their attorney is asking for this agreement in lieu of that, because it does include other provisions that are not in the current lease.
Okay. And just as a comment for council and for the public, Administrator Graceley mentioned that it would be very beneficial if we could purchase this property, and I totally agree. But I do think we need to understand the property owner's position in this, in that they own several properties. It's a form of investment that they make. The person who owns this property is a senior citizen, and he is in a position of, if he sold it and did not convert it to some other piece of property or some other form of investment, that he would then have to pay capital gains tax on the property. So he has no, he has no desire to go buy some other property or some other investment. So he has no real strong reason, you know, he likes the city, he likes Diana, you know, it's not that, okay? He has, you know, tax reasons why it's advantageous to him to leave it exactly where it is. So I think that that's a fair point on their behalf, even though it would be really helpful to the city to own that property, and we would love to. So any further discussion? Councilmember Rocher?
Just to add to what you're saying, donations to government can be written off.
That's a great point.
That's a nonstarter.
I second that, though. All right.
Mayor, there's one provision, paragraph nine, has an indemnification provision that I'll get with Diana about, but we need to, we'll have to remove that. She goes back to the property owner's attorney, we'll need to strike that. But I can suggest some alternative language that will probably satisfy them.
Right. Can I ask a legal clarification on this process? So this is to move this item to the next business meeting. Can, I think it's okay for her to take that number back to them between now and that business meeting, and for you to make that revision before it comes back to us?
Yes.
Is that?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. Just wanted to clarify that. Counsel? All right. On the motion to approve the parking lease for Verden Lots with a counteroffer of $1,000 per month, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes. All opposed signify by saying no. That motion carries by a vote of seven yeses and zero nos and is unanimous. At this time, we have on our agenda item eight going into executive session to discuss a personnel matter in the administrative department. I think a motion is in order. Councilmember Rocher?
Mayor, move that council move into executive session to discuss a personnel matter in the administrative department.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Rocher with a second from Councilmember Williams. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes. All opposed signify by saying no. That motion carries seven to zero and is unanimous. No votes can be made in an executive session with the exception of a decision to adjourn or to return to public session. Upon coming out of executive session, council may reconvene our public session to take action on matters discussed in executive session, and I do anticipate that that is what will be happening this evening, although that is not a given. At this time, to address and meet the state law that requires this, I am announcing that Simpsonville City Council is now in executive session to discuss a personnel matter in the administrative department. Council has returned to public session from executive session. Members of council, I move to approve the contract with T. Coker to assume the role of city administrator under the terms and conditions as discussed in executive session.
Second.
I have a motion from the mayor with a second from Councilmember Pinkerton.
No.
There were four people who said, so I just took one.
He wasn't one of them.
Lou Hutchings again. I'm going to have to give the guy a bell or something down there. Okay, so a motion from the mayor with a second from Councilmember Hutchings. Is there discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes. Yes. All opposed signify by saying no. That motion carries unanimously by a vote of seven yeses and zero nos. Congratulations, Mr. Coker. Welcome aboard. Now, if there are no objections, we will stand adjourned.